The meeting will come to order. Is this on?
That's for the video. I don't know about the audio in the room. But that's not what we're talking about.
The special town meeting, the special town budget meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Guilford, Connecticut, will be held at the Green Community Center, 32 Church Street in Guilford, Connecticut, on Tuesday, May 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. Could I have a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
No.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nominations are now in order for a moderator.
A nominee possible? Second.
Any further nominations?
No nominations.
Okay. Those in favor of Mr. Cello say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Mr. Cello?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to just review Section 7 of the Town Charter. Actually, Section 72 and 73. Section 73, subsection C, says, "No recommended appropriation may be increased by this town meeting, nor may any appropriation be made for a purpose not recommended by the Board of Finance." Now, it then goes on to say, "Any proposed appropriation may, however, be reduced by a meeting to a sum less than that recommended by the Board of Finance, provided that there are at least 300 eligible voters are in attendance and voting upon a motion to reduce that at least 200 vote in that favor." Now, does everybody understand that? We've got to have 300 people here. Well, registrar, how many do we have?
About 51. 51.
All right. So we don't have to worry about that section. Well, what I would like to do is ask those who wish to speak against the budget to speak first. So may I ask how many here are to speak against the budget? Two. Well, would you come up, please? Introduce yourself, give your address? Yep? And we'll hear everybody. And if I might ask, can you keep it like about five minutes?
Oh, I could beat that. Okay. Hi there. Karen Anderson. So, 43 Oak Avenue here in Guilford. So, I always ask myself why the town does stupid things. And here's an example. So, this would be a really simple thing for the town to do. $950,000 for a fake turf field, the second one. Infuse that money back into the town coffers. It's ridiculous. How many fields do you need, really? And, I don't know. I can't quite figure it out. You know, you've got more injuries on a fake turf field. I don't have kids, but it just seems like a ridiculous waste of money, but the town seems dead set to push that baby home. Now, I don't know why that is, but it's irritating to me. And it's almost a million dollars. It's a drop in the bucket, but I'm not liking it. And I don't like a lot of things the town does. So, that's it. Wrapping it up. I'm done.
Thank you. Be careful with that.
No, I won't.
Who else would like to? There was another hand. Would you come on up? Again, just introduce yourself.
Thank you. Hello? Monica Holfelder, 66 Waterlily.
Could you, did you get that far? I don't know, just to make sure everybody can hear you.
Hello? Oh, good grief. Hello? Monica Holfelder, 66 Waterlily. Still can't hear me? Is the light supposed to be on? There's a little switch here. Hello? Okay. My name is Monica.
Speak into the mic.
I'm not good with mics. First, I want to sincerely thank you for your service, the community service to our town. I love Guilford. My family hikes the beautiful trail systems here in town, West Woods, Timberland. We enjoy the green, Chat Finch, the lake, the town dock, the farms. We harvest our annual fruits from Bishop's. Guilford is unique, and I'm proud to call it my home. I have been a Guilford home-owning citizen for a short 16 years. Sadly, I have seen my property taxes consistently increase during this time. I'm speaking today on behalf of many folks like myself who have seen dramatic changes in our personal budgets. The economic crisis of 2008 was felt by many of us here in Guilford. We saw extensive private industry layoffs, salary furloughs, and salary freezes across the state. My husband incurred a 10% furlough. And here began the do more with less business model. The metal industry where I work today still models do more with less. It is perceived, unfortunately, that town employees are immune to the economic reality because you ask for raises every year. I ask myself, is the do more with less truly unique to private industry? Pensions in the private industry are becoming a thing of the past. Pension freeze is common language today. Let's talk about medical insurance. We are paying for our family of three through my husband's employer $6,000 a year for medical insurance. That's not including the $3,000 per head deductible. I'm sharing this so you cannot claim ignorance to how dismal things are on the outside. Look, in my home, we have a budget, a stagnant budget. I and my husband have not seen salary raises in years. Our medical insurance has gone through the roof. Property taxes continue to climb. We have had to make some changes to how we do things to live within our means. We drive old cars. We cook meals at home. No cable TV. Many things like this add up and help us live debt-free. We make it work. I ask you, our hired, elected, or nominated officials and board members, to hold yourselves to these same frugal standards with our money. It's hard out there. Choosing this path of chronic increases paves a challenging road for our kids, our future homebuyers, our future taxpayers. We owe it to them, to ourselves, to keep Guilford affordable. Guilford has a long history of being a multi-generation town. We need to take careful measures to protect that asset. We all know it's hard to start out. We have already seen a decline in our school enrollment. Our adult children leave for college and can't afford to come back to Guilford. This is what we've created. Connecticut has finally publicly acknowledged our state budget deficit and will hopefully start implementing fiscal responsible measures to save our state from further embarrassment. Guilford should not expect handouts from the state. We need to set a good example over our children by demonstrating fiscal responsibility and accountability. As a town, we should and can live within our means without the expectation of there always being a perceived need for more revenue or a risk of creating more debt. I'm not going to ask you to do more with less right now, but you can start thinking about it. Our budget has been on a chronic increase, spending more and more each year, raises every year, even in 2009. I'm asking you to consider maintaining course, share the burden, the economic burden. Join the rest of us. Help us. Have some skin in the game. Consider a wage freeze. We needed a new school. A salary freeze will help us pay for it. Consider operations continue as they have without additional revenue. Comb over each department's budget. Consider cross-department peer budget reviews. Hold everyone accountable. Be wary of creating more debt. Give taxpayers a break, a long overdue break. Lastly, I would to share an idea for addressing the pressing low voter participation. Speaking with my neighbors and community friends, I've found many were not even aware it was a voting day. People are busy. They may not read the paper every week. Some knew, but the day got away. My idea is this. We currently have a mass community notification system in place. Let's use it. Consider using this system to send a polls are open notification the morning of May 17th. It would be wonderful to see more folks at the polls reflecting a more accurate, larger representation of how residents feel about your request. Thank you.
Sir? Please come up.
Well, I can figure out.
I can use this one. It's okay.
Yeah, well, keep your interest. I don't need it. Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Ken McKenzie, 6 Broad Street. As you, I'm sure I've spoken a lot at some of the Board of Finance hearings. I'm not going to reiterate everything I've said at those hearings, but to keep it brief, I voted for the first round of the budget with the understanding that there would be a process at some point, understanding slash hope. Maybe it was more wishful thinking on my part. Because I do believe that these 3.5-plus percent increases every year, which has gone on for over 20 years, is unsustainable. Three years ago, our budget was $85 million, and now we're at $95 million. And I've just asked the question, and if no one has given me an answer, as to what is the level wherein we stop? And I do think there is a point wherein we need to be able, willing, and ready to stop because I do believe that if we don't, we are going to continue to see families being forced to move out of town and an increasing burden on those trying to move into town to start homes. There's a couple of points. I think it's interesting that, I believe there's an email going around, which I have not seen, from Senator Kennedy. The Democrats apparently have a plan to cut government spending back to the 2012 level, which is four years ago. I don't know how much this plan will save because I haven't seen the details of the plan, but I think it's interesting that the idea is to cut spending at the government level to reduce the budget, which is now somewhere between $500 million and $1 billion, depending on who you talk to. Some of the proposals that I've suggested have to do with just that, which is cutting some of the spending that we have in town, or just curtailing the raises that continue to go on every year. But we have to do something, in my opinion. If I had suggested something along the lines of what is in this email, which I've been told is out there, people would respond saying, "Well, you're going to cut services." So I'm curious to know how Senator Kennedy is going to do this without cutting services because that's a blasphemy. The other thing that happened recently was at the recent Board of Selectmen meeting, it was unanimously voted to not approve any cost-of-living adjustments for retirees in town. And apparently, there has been no cost-of-living adjustment since 2008. So I think it's interesting that the retirees in town have not had any cost-of-living adjustments, yet we, again, we have a 3.5-plus percent budget increase every single year. So I do believe that we need to take steps to figure out a solution to what I believe is a looming problem. It's not just here. It's at the state level, and it's at every municipality throughout the country. Some of the easy changes. I was disappointed after the defeat at the first referendum, which was very close, and those in favor of the budget attributed to a lack of a get-out-the-vote. And so I'm sure there will be a push to get those people to the polls. And they're probably right. They're probably, if you could get all the school people to vote for the budget that voted for the high school, it should be relatively easy to get any budget passed. The current budget, 2.1% of the increase of the 4% increase, half of it basically, is debt service for the new high school. And that's already been voted, so I do think we have to respect that and honor that. Having said that, when the budget was turned down, I think it's incumbent on, certainly on the Board of Finance, to heed the voice of the nay vote, which won albeit by only 40 votes, and it was a weak turnout of 14.7%, followed by a 57% turnout for a primary vote, and that doesn't include the unaffiliates who could vote. So 57% of our Democrats and Republicans voted a week later, which is a huge number relative to what we had at our referendum, which hits everybody's pocketbooks here at home. When it came back to the Board of Finance, the budget becomes the responsibility of the Board of Finance. And my hope was that the Board of Finance would then roll up the sleeves and actually present some ideas on cuts or changes that could be made to the budget. That did not happen. What happened was, there was a meeting with the Board of Selectmen where they came forward with their $150,000 in cuts. And a meeting, there must have been a meeting at the Board of Ed that I had missed, but they ultimately came back with $150,000 of their own cuts because it was not addressed at the public Board of Ed meeting that I attended, which I believe was the only one prior to the Board of Finance meeting. But once the budget is in the hands of the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance really has a lot more control slash power slash authority than the Board took upon itself to use. And so what happened at the last Board of Finance meeting was, we took the $150,000 recommendation that was handed down from the Board of Ed and from the town and approved it with really very little discussion as to whether that was the right number, whether the places where the money was coming from was the proper place for it to be coming from. Personally, I think that there are some easy layups out there that could be cut. You'll see it in the paper this week. One of them is the $175,000 contingency that we have in there as a line item. That money flows into our rainy day surplus fund at the end of the year. It has never been used before, the contingency fund, so we budget $175,000. It's never been used. So right there, it dwarfs the 150 that each side put forward. We've got $250,000 budgeted for new lights for the high school. I understand, I'm told that they're needed. I don't know whether or not they're needed now, or whether they can wait another year. If it's a safety issue, then clearly they need to be done sooner rather than later. But to me, lights are something that should be capitalized, not expensed, meaning it should go to referendum. It should be included with the fire trucks and the other long-lived items that we will come to referendum with next year. And next year, we are looking at 8 million plus in capital projects that will be up on a referendum line coming up next year. There are a lot of other programs that were held back this year to get this budget through, on both the town side and on the Board of Ed side, that undoubtedly are coming up next year. So make no doubt about it. Next year is going to be a difficult budget following this one. So if you think this is difficult, I think next year is going to be equally as tough, if not tougher. And so we need to start thinking about what ceiling is and where or when and how changes are going to be made to curtail the spending spree. So that's basically, in a nutshell, I will be voting no on Tuesday, and if there is a round three, I hope that we will sit down and see if we can do a little bit more work on it.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Yes? Certainly. You're welcome. Please.
I really don't need to say very much. Catherine Adams, 250 Dromara Road. I'm a brand-new resident to Guilford. I've lived here since July, so I'm not brand-new, but not a full year yet. And I voted no on the budget. And maybe you look at me and you think, "Well, why would you do that? You just moved here. You thought this was great town, and you're going to support it gung-ho." And I'll just tell you what, I'm going to be hypercritical. I'm going to be an involved citizen. And I think that everything needs, we need to be accountable. We need to be sustainable. My taxes are really high, but I moved here because I wanted to live in a smaller community. I left a place where I actually paid higher taxes, but I didn't want to be in a big city anymore. So here I am, a new resident at Guilford, and how do I find out about these meetings? So I drove in through town to this meeting tonight, and there's no notification of the Tuesday meeting or the Tuesday vote. There's no big sign saying, "Get out the vote on Tuesday." It's a week from today. I don't understand that. There was a big sign last time, and I voted. There's not a big sign this time. So I wonder, how are people knowing to come to vote on these things? When we have 14% showing up, we're going to have 14% again because no one knows, and people have already forgotten, and we're relying on people not showing up, and that's how budgets are being passed? That's not accountability. I really don't understand it. And I have last, the last one in my bag. I looked through it, and I can see lots of overlap on budget lines. I don't know it all, and I don't pretend to know it all, and I'm sure a lot of it's really important. And I'm the last one to say, "Let's cut services or cut education," but we need to cut something. We move around. We cut things. We have to do it. It's just part of what we have to do. It's editing, and editing is an incredible function. We all need to do it. We need to do it together. We need to do it so people can stay here, and people can come here, and the town can grow and be as wonderful as it is. That's why we came here. But I want to stay here. I don't want to have to leave because my taxes are growing 3% every year, and that's what will happen. I'll phase out before my child can go to this brand-new high school that I've heard so much about. And that's so disappointing to think, "Well, she won't even get to go there, and it's supposed to be outstanding, top-notch. Who's going to be going there? Whose children will be attending schools?" So, thank you.
You know the drill. What do you got for a microphone? This is here if you can get it to turn on. Hello? It's supposed to be, ah, here it is. Yeah? There it is. Oh, something works in here. Anyway, Joe Petrowski, Valley Shores Drive.
I know stranger to meetings like this. I stood here and said, "Hey, somebody says we need a Public Works Garage. Let's build it. We need a community center. Let's build it." People were standing up here screaming about buying fire engines. I stood here and said, "I'm just going to drive it." Need a new high school. I was concerned about losing the state accreditation for college. That would have been like a nuclear disaster in this community if that had happened. Somebody has to pay for these things. I think what has to be realized here, and I've been involved for over 30 years, to repeat something I said in 2011. The town is being run very efficiently. So is the school system compared to what it's been. The other meeting we had, someone asked Mr. Boss about the $17,000 per pupil cost for education. And he went through all the stats and compared us to other communities. He did a fine job. When my kids were in the school system about 10 years ago, the cost was about $13,000. I don't like paying taxes. But worse than that, I hate wasting money. I'm more comfortable paying the $17,000 to the school system now just because of the way the dollars are being deployed in the system. The money is being put in the right place. The end result shows it. We are not wasting money. The town hall side, there's been a lot of changes made. Someone mentioned the turf field. I'm in favor of the turf fields, and I'll tell you why. Parks and Recs have done a great job with the fields in town. I just came by Nut Plains Park. It's bumper-to-bumper, shoulder-to-shoulder with people and kids in cars. Bittner Park, beautiful place. Quanapod, same thing. But not all the property in Guilford is usable and playable. Take Long Hill Field, for example. Get a rainstorm, kids can't play there for three or four days. I was in favor of the stadium field up at the high school. Problem was, my kids were young. They were doing sports. Every time it came time for them to play, the field was chewed up, and they had to save it for the varsity. What good is that? I don't like paying taxes, and none of us could get ahead by going backwards. And I think if we're going to enjoy the quality of life we have in this town, we better move forward. And even if that means moderate tax increases. The increases this year are not that big. I voted no the first time, and it wasn't because of the money, and I've said that before. But I got to say, the town is being run very efficiently, and there is a cost savings which cannot be measured in dollars. And I encourage everybody to vote yes. People that voted no voted no for a reason, and they're entitled to that vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Are you doing that either, or you do for the vote?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking for people to?
I'm asking for people who would like to speak against the budget to speak. I think the rest of the people here, if a motion was made to move this, adjourn this meeting and move the issue to the referendum, would probably vote for it. If I'm wrong, I apologize. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak against the budget? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion that we adjourn this town meeting and move the issue to the referendum next week? What? If there's anybody who would like to speak favorably for it, please let me know. Come on up, Bill.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bill Floss. Many of you know me. I'm the chairman of the Board of Education. I'm relatively new from Guilford's purposes to Guilford. I think I've been here for 20-something years, and, you know, I understand if you weren't here on the second boat after the Mayflower, you're a newcomer, so I treat my, classify myself as a newcomer. I respect everybody's view here this evening, people that do not support the budget, people that do support that do support the budget. You're our constituents, we have to work with you, we have, we are happy to provide services. I do want to just touch on a couple of points that were mentioned, because I think they are important for everybody to understand. One is a process-related question. The Board of Education started working on this budget last October. We had somewhere around 10, 12, Dr. Moore, 12, in that area, meetings, both ourselves, with members of the public, with administrators, with teachers, with members of the Board of Finance. We listened to every suggestion that was made, specific suggestions, general suggestions. Actually, truthfully, in our public hearings, there was more requests for us to add expenses that we ultimately voted to reject. We were asked to add art teachers, we were asked to add music teachers, we were asked to do some other programming, and we decided that now is not the time to do it, if ever is a time. We reduced Dr. Freeman's, the superintendent's, proposed budget by about $800,000. The budget that we present now is the second-lowest operating budget increase that we have proposed since 1994, second-lowest since 1994. There are a couple of points that I think are important, and Mr. Petrowski mentioned one of them. One is that Guilford's per-student spending is just about the average for the state of Connecticut per household, per capita, per student. Does that necessarily mean we're going to have average achievement? Of course not, that's not our goal. The other half of the ledger, the other side of the equation, is a really important thing to us, and that is, what is the product? What does the service look like? It's all, you could, a cost can always be cut. The question is, at what loss do the benefit in the product? We're in a great place right now in our school system. We're recognized by U.S. News &amp; World Reports as one of the best high schools in the state of Connecticut. Connecticut Coalition for Achievement Now says we're in the top 10 in high schools in the state of Connecticut. There are two high schools in the state of Connecticut that have higher achievement on standardized tests at a lower per-student cost, and they're both in West Hartford. So, we are making, we have a tremendous product in Guilford right now. People want to be here in part for the schools. Is there anybody who is an elected official, or an appointed official in Guilford right now, who thinks that it's a good idea to rely as heavily as we do on the property tax? No, I can speak for every single one of them. Guilford is forced by the state of Connecticut to rely much too much on residential property taxes. It is a bad tax system. It is, however, the only system that we have. And until the state of Connecticut does something about meaningful property tax reform, this is it. In the meantime, though, there is an increase in debt service this year because of, really just because of the high school. The fact is, though, that for the last 15 years, our debt per capita has been somewhere between a half and two-thirds of the state average debt per capita. We have put off investing in infrastructure. So, surprise, the year that we've put some money into infrastructure, on a percentage basis, our costs have gone up. But that doesn't mean that our costs before were reasonable, they weren't, we under-invested in infrastructure. And every bit, every representation that was made to you, when the high school project was being considered in 2011, about what interest rates we were going to pay, about what your annual increases were going to be, about the state reimbursements, every one of those was met, or actually was underestimated. And so, the ultimate increase that we are looking at, Mr. Chairman, is less than we projected that it was going to be with the full state reimbursements. I'll tell you one thing, there are some reductions in staff in this budget from the Board of Ed side, we're reducing at least 10 staff people. We anticipate, although, we may, we, actually, our kindergarten enrollment is going back up from compared to projections, so that's something we're going to have to deal with. It's good, because it shows that Guilford is a desirable destination town now, people want to be in our district. One thing that is not in our budget, I just want to make sure that this is very clear, there is not five cents in this budget, Mr. Chairman, for anything to do with a field at the high school, turf, artificial, natural, or anything else. That is not part of the operating budget. It never was, it never has been, it never will be as part of this budget. I should note, though, that was part of the high school referendum that was approved four years ago, five years ago. I should note, however, though, that we did get a report last night at the Board of Education meeting, that the Guilford High School Building Committee, which is in charge of the project, has actually put out a request for bid for three different alternatives relating to that field, one with a traditional fill, one with plastic-covered sand-filled, and another with, I think, some other, not rubber, infill. But that, they're getting those prices, and there will be a field there of some sort, either natural or turf, in some form, but that is not part of this operating budget. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we all respect the differences that there are on anything that we do in town. I think we all respect that we're all here for the same reason, we all love Guilford, we all are trying to do the right thing. And one thing that we on the Board of Education have tried to do is try to implement the idea, the thought, the knowledge, that we only get one chance to educate somebody's child, and we want to try to do that with excellent professional development, small class sizes, good facilities, and support for teachers with modern instructional materials and information technology. So we're grateful for the support that has been given to us in the past, and I will just add one thing, that if anybody has any specific ideas about cost reductions or expense reductions, please let us know. This is not a secret process, we want to hear from anybody who's got some ideas, but we also want to hear from people who have ideas about how to make the program better, and how to make student achievement better. So, with that, I would urge a yes vote on the budget on Tuesday. It is a responsible budget, it's a reasonable budget, it's one that I think deserves the support of the citizens.
Thank you very much. Whom else would like to speak? Mr. Balastresi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carl Balastresi, I've lived in Guilford all my life. I want to get up tonight to support the budget, because I serve on the Board of Selectmen, and I've never been more proud of how our government functions. Joe Mazza provides us with very competent leadership, his integrity is beyond question, and those of us who work on the Board of Selectmen with Joe support him in a very respectful manner. We discuss all of the issues, we come to majority conclusions. It's a pleasure to work with him. And also, I have to say that the same is true with the Board of Finance. I can't remember when the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have worked so well together, and I am proud of that, because two members of the Board of Finance are former students of mine, it took a lot to get them through school, but I'm very happy that where they are today. What my point is, is that Guilford is an island. We have here a really good moment in our history. We are working together to try as hard as we can to provide the services for our citizens, and still keep a reasonable cost to providing those services. And it's not easy. We're angry about some of the things that go on in Hartford, we're angry about a lot of the things that go on in Washington, but we have good people in positions of representation, both at the state and the national level, for this state and for this community, and they work well with all of us. So when people, and as the second woman who got up to speak, my heart goes out to you, because I, my taxes have gone up, I mean, I paid $18,000 when I built my house, and today, it's valued at almost $400,000, and the taxes have gone up in the same percentage. So, I'm paying, you know, the same kind of taxes that you're paying. There's no control over that. But what I want to tell all of you who question about, can we do it better? Maybe we can, and we certainly are trying every day to do that, but you have one of the most, one of the best-led, one of the most efficient governments of any town that I can think of anywhere. And I'm proud of that. I know I'm speaking because I'm part of it, but I'm proud of that, because I know the people who work so hard every single day, not just the elected officials, but the department heads. We had someone get up at our selectmen's meeting last week and say, "We shouldn't be spending all this money on roads, because they don't need it." Well, our town engineer got up, who has 41 years of experience working for Guilford, and explained why we need to do this. We've had people in the past who say, "Why do we have to buy six police cars every year? Why do we have to buy two trucks for public works every year?" Well, we can put it off for five or six years, but then, we have to put out a ton of money to catch up. We do things on a per-year basis, so that we don't have a really big bill at the end of five or six or 10 years. It's called planning, it's called management, it's called responsible leadership and government, and you should be very proud. I know it's hard for a lot of citizens to live here, but I also know that what you get for your dollar is the best you're going to get from any community, anywhere in the state, and probably in the country. We have a great deal here, not just to be proud of, but to be thankful for, and I would urge all of you to please support this budget, because if it goes down again, we're going to have to cut some substantial services, and we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that for you. So please vote yes on the 14th.
She gets a day, I think you got the day. Whom else would like to speak? Pass the baton.
Thank you. So I'll just say, it's the 17th, so I'll get that right out of the way before I even have to start. Carl. Lou Federici, 47 Thistle Rock Drive, a member of the Board of Finance, and I do support the budget. I am understanding and appreciative of the concern that people have with regard to this budget, or any budget, any spending that takes place in their life. We are in an odd time right now in Connecticut. It's, from the outside, people would look in and say, "You're in an incredibly prosperous place." And Guilford is a beautiful and seemingly prosperous place, but it's precarious for many, many people. And I like to believe, and I certainly work hard myself in my service to the town, to appreciate that, and do what we can to respond and be responsive to those problems. So I don't want anyone to feel that it's not understood or recognized, but I do have a few comments with regard to some of the issues that were raised, many of which were valid, some of which, I think, were off the mark nonetheless, okay? I take a long-term view of this budget process. I mean, it is a one-year budget, that's what we have, some have asked, "Can we do a multi-year budget?", and the answer is no. It's a statutory requirement that we do it this way, but nonetheless, the town, first electmen's office, and the school, I know for certain, plan over many years, and they try to allocate expenses in a way that levels, keeps the changes in these budget increases, which they have candidly been increases, fairly modest. But in fact, it's been modest over the past three or four years on a downward trend. There's some things in that long-term view that have had a significant impact. The one that comes to my mind is the fact that we've essentially added a paid fire department. That didn't exist 15 years ago. That's an expensive undertaking for the town. I have not once heard a single person come and say, "Cut the fire department, we don't need a fire department." That would save a lot of money. That's something that we as a community have decided is a good idea, and that we've absorbed, and that has a significant impact on the ability of the town to budget those expenses. It's been said that a 3%, a 3.5% increase over 20 years, was the word used, was the time period used tonight, is unsustainable. I would say that's slightly off the mark. In fact, it's been 40 years, as far back as the records are available, that the budget increases over time, if you average them out, it's been 3.5% almost to the point. But the point of that is, it is sustainable. Many, many things, if you go back over 40 years, you'll see many, many things have increased at a 3.5% rate, some more. You don't want to think about what education used to cost, higher education, college education, public education is the same thing. So those numbers are not unrealistic, they are reflective of expenses that society and the economy that we live in have sustained for 40 years or more. It's definitely possible. A number of people have commented that it's, you can become, the town can become so expensive that no one can live here, or would be able to stay here. It reminds me a little bit of the Yogi Bear comment regarding the restaurant, that's, you know, nobody goes here anymore because it's too crowded. It's obviously a desirable town. People have made the decision to continue to buy property here, knowing full well what the expenses are, and recognizing what it's going to cost to do that. I mean, I do think that if it was a surprise that these taxes were going to be suddenly this amount, that would be a valid objection, but frankly, they've been consistent, and they've been consistently lower, at least over the last three years. I do want to touch on the contingency, one very specific item that was raised. In my opinion, that would be irresponsible to take that out, it's good fiscal planning. Does some of that go into the fund balance? Possibly, not exclusively, but the fund balance, and keeping the fund balance at a certain level, is a necessary component of a budget. If you don't fund, increasingly add to the fund balance, over time, that will erode, that, we will pay the price for that, not this year, not next year, maybe five years, certainly in 10 years, if that fund balance isn't sufficient to keep Wall Street happy, where we will need to borrow money from time to time, we're going to be in trouble. So, it's not the purpose of the contingency, things do go wrong, and it's necessary, but if that's part of where that money comes from, I think that's money well spent. I have some more, and probably at my five-minute, Mr., Paul's feet haven't started tapping, but I'll try and wrap it up there. I just wanted to do say, I support the budget, I think it's a responsible budget, and it takes a long view, and I hope you all think carefully about doing that. Thank you.
Sir, remember to raise your hand again just soon as we're finished here, all right? You wanted to speak? I don't know, somebody back there raised their hand.
Veronica Wallace, North River Street, Guilford. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. Until we have property tax reform in this town, we have what we have. That's the reality of it. What drives me crazy more than anything is when I come to a public hearing such as this, or a planning and zoning meeting, and residents like me have to get up and they have to tap a microphone, because they can't be heard. I respectfully ask the first electman to put into this year's budget a public address system, so that people could come to these hearings and be able to be heard. It's probably been cut, but these are the simple things that go into our budget that we need, and I'm supporting it. I'm urging everyone else to do the same. Thank you.
Was it your hand?
Yes, Paul.
Mr. Mazza.
Yes, Paul, if we pass the budget, we get a microphone. I'm Joe Mazza, first elected. To the Joe, thank you very much for your kind comments, Paul, same thing. To the stories we heard in the beginning, like Paul, I do sympathize with those stories. Way back when, I was in a safe position. I wasn't born and raised in this town, I'm a kid from the Bronx, as you can probably tell. So, I had hard times too. I don't like raising taxes, I don't like paying increasing taxes, but I have a talent to run, and I have a beautiful town to keep up. I see somebody go in their eyes, but it's true, okay?
I see somebody rolling their eyes, but it's true, okay? We have an outstanding police department. We have an outstanding fire department, an ambulance service, Public Works. We have outstanding parks and fields, maintaining my parking wreck department. Guilford is a beautiful town, but there's a cost to that. There's a cost to each one of these items and departments that I just mentioned. There are people that work for these departments, highly trained, and they have to be paid. There's equipment that is required for these individuals to run these departments, and there's a cost to maintain that equipment, and there's a cost to buy that equipment. And that's why we all live in this town, because it's a lovely town. And that's what attracted you, ma'am, I think, to this town, the education system and the quality of life. You should shake your head. So I don't know why you came here, okay? But the quality of life. And I think as you, years go by and you've lived here all very long, you'll appreciate the quality of life in Guilford and the education system. We do our best to maintain that quality of life, and we have excellent department heads. And each year, they return a little bit of this budget back to the general fund, and that has enabled us to build up our undesignated reserve, or put in another term, our rainy day fund. At one point, our rainy day fund was very low, about 2% of our revenue. That would have not allowed us to sell our bonds to fund the new Guilford High School. The rainy day fund is now at a point where it's about 8% of our revenue, where we have been able to sell our bonds at a rate of under 3%, which has afforded us a debt service much lower than was first proposed to our citizens back in 2011, when we said we'd be paying about 4% interest. Now we're paying less than 3%. So we have been, in my opinion, very diligent in running this town financially. So we do care. We do care when we prepare these budgets. And as far as the information that we put forth, and this goes for the Board of Ed When we first have our department heads present their budgets to the Board of Selectmen, we hold hearings. These hearings are taped, and they're run on GCTV for about a month to the point where you, it gets to a point where you just get tired of looking at it, at least I do. And the hearings are two days. Every board and commission, from the police department to the assessor, the fire, Public Works, parking wreck, you name it, even the ladies at the registrar's office coming before us, and present their budgets. The reason we do that is so you, the citizens, see and understand what goes into the preparation of every line item in the town budget and into their department budgets, fully transparent. And at these hearings, it's not only the Board of Selectmen that they're presenting the budget to, but it's also every member of the Board of Finance. And they're not just there as fixtures. They get a chance to ask as many questions as they want. And that's the first step in our budget process. And then the Board of Selectmen do their deliberations, have their workshops, have their public meetings, and formulate their budget. By the way, we cut almost a half a million dollars from what the department heads presented to us on that first go-round. Then we hand off the budget to the Board of Finance, and then I present the budget to the Board of Finance in this very room, and then they're all here, and then they quiz me, and we go through the same thing all over again. And then Board of Finance has a public hearing, and then we have another town budget meeting like we're having here, and then it goes to a vote. So what I'm saying is there's complete transparency. There's nothing that's done behind the scenes. The Board of Education does the same thing. I think we have a lot of information out there. But what I'm going to wrap this up by saying is that we all do, I think, a lot of work in putting this budget together, and it's not a six-week or 10-week period. It goes on all year long, and you can ask any one of my department heads a title listening to me. Every department head meeting, which is at least monthly, we concentrate on expenditures. We concentrate on where we are during the year on operating the town finances, on operating the budgets. And that's why they are so good in spending your money, be very careful, I should say, in spending your money, and they always return something back to the town. And that's why we were able to build up our fund balance. We do not waste your money. And to reiterate what Lou said, Lou Federici said, that contingency is there so we don't have to dip into our fund balance. If one department goes over or a little short at the end of the year, we have that contingency. It's a little savings account for us. So again, please take that into consideration. Next Tuesday, the 17th? Yes, Paul, 17th? Please come out for the budget. If you have any questions, contact my office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazza.
Matt Hoy, 32 Seaview Terrace. I also have the honor of serving on the Board of Finance as chair, and this may sound a little unusual from somebody from the Board of Finance, but I'm going to say that numbers are meaningless without context. First off, it's easy to pick line items out of this budget and say, "Let's cut $100,000 here. Let's cut $50,000 here. Let's cut $10,000 there." Where's the context? What does it mean? What's the impact? And have you thought about that impact before you said, "Let's just cut $100,000 out of this budget because it looks big"? Number two, the town over the past six, seven years, Joe, you can correct me on this, but I think the FTEs for the town over that period of time are down by 10 full-time employees over the last six, seven years?
Eleven.
Eleven. That's context. People have been doing some work. Board of Education, you heard earlier this evening, the chair and Bill Boss said, "In this budget alone, there are 10 full-time equivalent positions that have been eliminated." That's doing the work. Now, there have been other teaching positions eliminated over the past five, six years. Pairs have been eliminated. At the same time, we have implemented, we've, an in-house autism program. So some of those savings in terms of personnel have been absorbed by increased services to our community. That's context. Guilford does have a pension plan for its employees. That plan is frozen, but that plan is also funded at the high 80s to 90% rate for the various funds that we have. And I think there are three, Mitch, how many, three or four? Three funds. That's not what the state of Connecticut has been doing. They haven't been funding it. Other municipalities, West Haven, they're in a little bit of trouble with their pension stuff. That's context. We have been doing what we are supposed to be doing. That's why there have been two, two and a half, sometimes three. Lou, you said three and a half over 40 years, or whatever the increases are, because that's the responsibility of a responsible government, to fund things the way they should be done. Lastly, what does this budget mean? Right now, we're offering to you a budget that calls for a 2.74% tax increase. Context? A month ago, it was 2.86. Yeah, we cut $300,000. Some people said that wasn't enough, but we did drop the tax increase. One of the reasons we dropped the tax increase was because the voters had said, "We don't think that you did a good enough job." That tax increase would have been lowered even further had the Board of Finance not taken the, what I consider to be prudent action, of reducing revenue estimates from the state of Connecticut, because we all know what's going on up there, and municipal revenues are hard to come by. Municipal funding is hard to come by. The Board of Finance cut $200,000 out of their revenue estimates. That's context. Without the debt service for the high school in this budget, the tax increase would have been 0.46%, not 2.74%. That's context. The Board of Education's budget currently stands at a 1.73% tax increase, spending increase. The town's spending increase, their operating budget increase is 1.96%. That's context. I think what has happened this year with this budget, given what we have faced with a significant increase in debt service load, is a pretty amazing job. A 1.81% spending, operating increase between the town and the Board of Ed. To me, that's context. Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Hi. It's kind of loud. I'm Jamie Micalay, 301 Willow Road, and I am here to support the budget. I am saddened when I hear, I know every, some people in town are truly struggling financially, and I don't, I wish I had something better to say other than I'm sorry because I know the economy is not great for all people. I guess what I think is, in bad times and good times, I do want to maintain my town, and as the town leaders have said, it is expensive, but they are doing a wonderful job, I think, better than most towns, in keeping that cost down for us. And so I would like to applaud them and say thank you because I know it is very hard work. And the only other thing I want to say is, I think when you think of government, you often think of government, that's them, and then there's us. But the thing about our town government is they are us. They're members of our community. They're our friends. They're our neighbors, and they were, we voted for them, and they're doing an outstanding job. So I know it's not easy to say, "Yes, please spend more of my money," but I do think we're getting a great value for what we're giving them. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Jo Kessner, and I live and work at 131 Boston Street in Guilford, and I am in support of this year's budget. I spend most of my day, every day, in Guilford, and I'm so pleased to have the level of service in education, police, fire, recreation that we have in this town. And I think that this is a modest increase in the budget, and it is one that I think is tremendously responsible, and I'm thankful for what our town is able to do with these resources, because I think that as a business owner and a mom and homeowner, I want to make smart investments in the future, and I think that that's what this represents. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion that we adjourn this town meeting and move the budget to referendum?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposition? So moved. I will entertain a motion that this town meeting be adjourned.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?